I hereby call to order this committee of the whole meeting for Monday, December 11th, 2023. The time is 8:03 a.m. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone.
Here.
John Caesarretti.
Here.
Ann Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Allison Pathless.
Here.
Amy Paley.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the November 6th, 2023 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the November 6th, 2023 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesarretti?
Yes.
Ann Hart?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paley?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. We will begin with facility development. Mrs. Kim unfortunately could not be here today. I believe I'm turning this over to Mr. Boltmeier for 2024 summer construction projects and bids.
All right, so I just have a couple of quick slides and then let Joe add a couple of comments and we're can ask any questions if we'd like. All right, so about 11 days ago, the district opened up the bids for summer '24 projects. And just to review the work that we've got going on at four different locations, it's included in these bids. At the junior high, we have a partial roof replacement, which is a little over half the square footage of the roofing at that building. And then one replacing one mechanical rooftop unit which services, I think, three or four classrooms plus the front office. Then one of the alternates is to replace flooring in all the first floor hallways plus an additional three classrooms. And then some renovations to the only conference room at the junior high. It's currently a bit of a larger conference room. And what we would be doing is putting installing a divider and creating the having the opportunity for the junior high to have two smaller spaces, which would be really helpful for them. Over at McKenzie, over the previous summers, we had been working on replacing flooring on the second floor, which had all asbestos underneath the flooring. We've completed about two-thirds, so the last third of the upstairs in the hallway would get replaced. And then there's, I believe, three classrooms on the first floor closer to the cafeteria side that that would be the last classrooms at McKenzie to get replaced. And that flooring and then with the asbestos flooring underneath the teachers lounge on the second floor, there'd be some renovations to there. Currently, the hallway wall at the McKenzie teachers lounge is kind of a curved wall, and it sets back a good bit from the main hallway corridor. So we would be pulling that wall closer to the hallway, lining it up with other walls and making the teachers lounge larger at McKenzie. And at Ramona, there would be a replacement of one mechanical rooftop unit which services the front office area, and then adding a water booster pump to increase water pressure. We did something similar at Highcrest this past summer, and from what I've heard, that's been helpful so far, so we're working on that for Ramona. And then at Central, all the work is outside the building, replacing the blacktop behind the school where recess and activities are occurring. And then while we have that up is running a new drainage system from kind of the center point of that blacktop area and then connecting it down the alley through out to the city's connection. Currently, the existing draining system is not in great shape, plus it runs directly under the cafeteria, so it can be a bit problematic. So it's good timing to do both of those at the same time. And here are the costs. So what our recommendation is, 5.1 million, the base, which is the roofing, and some of the other components is 3.8. When you see the alternates, the Cs mean Central. That's C1 is the asphalt, and C2 is some of the fencing work that goes with that. R1 is at Ramona. J1 is the junior high. That's the hallway and three classrooms of flooring. And then the alternate J2 and J3 are work in the auditorium. And J2 would be replacing the lighting and controls and a lot of the electrical work in there. As time has gone on, it's been a bit problematic. And then J3 would be to add some additional lighting that could help light another part of the stage that we currently don't have. So J2 and 3 would be a nice investment towards the auditorium at the junior high. And then the only alternate that we had in the whole scope was J4, which was another one for the auditorium junior high. We're recommending to reject that one. That's all I have. Joe, if you want to add any thoughts and open up for questions?
Good morning. That's a great recap. Just I'll add, we had four bid packages. We had a tremendous amount of coverage from company contractors. We're really happy with the numbers, they're extremely favorable. As Corey mentioned, almost half of the total scope is junior high roofing. Within each bid package, there are specified allowances for unforeseen conditions. So in the base bid, we had 190,000 worth of allowance value to handle such unforeseen conditions if we do encounter them. And then within the central site scope of work, we have another $95,000 for unsuitable soil if we encounter those types of conditions. So all in all, we're extremely happy. Just as a reminder, we did do a repurchase for the two rooftop units, so that was done back in October. Hopefully, it's enough time to get those shipped in time. That's all I'll say on that. But all in all, we're extremely happy. We built in that bid day flexibility like we talked about, so we're going to recommend six alternates, so we're in a great position again.
Thank you. Board members, any questions, comments? Ms. Pathless?
Yeah. Can you just remind us what J4 was for?
So J4 was, so in the auditorium, as we broke down, there's some large spotlights in the back of the auditorium that are, you know, move around, there's one on each side, and then also some backdrop lighting that currently doesn't exist. It would go on the back wall of the auditorium stage that would allow for some additional effects that we currently don't have.
And why was it rejected?
As we were looking, so a couple of things. As we were looking at what we were looking to spend for the junior high, as we broke down and we're including it in the scope work for this upcoming summer, the amount that we're ultimately recommending is substantially more than what we had initially thought. Part of that is going back a few years, one of the contractors that's providing the equipment and lighting for stages, which is pretty specialized, they, we had been in conversations with them for a few years, and the numbers we had shared, we were led to believe that that was including labor to install it all. And as we got in with our engineers and architects, we realized that was not the case. And so what we're recommending is substantially more than what we initially thought. But now that we've been in it, this is what we're comfortable with, and I think there are opportunities to pursue that last option, you know, over the next few years.
Anyone else? Mrs. Schneider-Fabes?
Always exciting to think about some of the projects. Just wondering, do we have concerns with any supply chain issues? I know we were, it's a really good question.
There was some concern, it would be with the rooftop units. And every year, we try to get those orders placed as soon as we can. So again, I mean, we're, October, that was, that took place, and there is a much less lead time for these rooftop units than the chillers. But again, it's that supply chain with mechanical equipment that just, we just hope. So that would be the only concern would be the rooftop units. So right now, per the scheduled ship date, we expect the shipping to take place in March.
Can you guys hear me? Lisa? Didn't hear you, but I think I understood the question. So it was, are we worried about the timeline?
Right. No, Danny. Okay.
John, did you have any questions?
No, I was just trying to hear what Lisa said.
Anyone else? And is there anything you need from us today?
No, no. The plan would be then next Monday night, we would bring back each of the recommended contractors for board approval.
Sounds like we're in great shape and doing everything that can be done, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're ready to move on to strategy. Mrs. Schneider-Fabes?
Yeah, so we are going to talk about strategic plan goal number three, professional community action steps. Dr. Kama's goal.
Thank you. We have, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We have Katie Lee and Heather Glouacki will walk us through an update on our goal three action steps. So thank you.
Good morning, everyone. We are here to...
Just a reminder to bring your microphone.
Yeah, I was trying to, but I...
There we go.
Tried, okay, there we go. I'm also trying to see my screen. Heather Glouacki and I are the co-champions for Goal Three Professional Community, and we are going to share with you some action step updates that address the fostering of our professional community that values and supports and develops and retains highly effective staff. So the first that you are very aware of is the district strategic advisory team, monitoring our progress and offering suggestions for the strategical refinement throughout the year. This is year three of our strategic plan, and so this team will be meeting three times this year. We conducted our first meeting on September 7th, which was a kickoff to orient the members on our purpose and review the action steps. And our second meeting, which would be a progress mid-year update, is scheduled for February 8th. We just wanted to also recognize all of the DSAP members and thank them for their work with us today, or this year. And District 39 continues to seek feedback regarding onboarding, mentoring, and support in their careers here in our District 39 community, to identify themes using exit interviews, surveys, and focus groups. We're continuing to do that. We have collected some information last year, and then this year, we're continuing to provide those opportunities for staff leaving the district. Most often, it's in the form of a survey with that four-point scale, with some questions that are asked consistently, which is what has been satisfying and enjoyable, what has been challenging and frustrating, and what could have been done to retain you. Also this year, our new staff are meeting with Dr. Carrie Kama's goalie with some cookies and conversations at lunch throughout the year to have some personal contact focused group conversations, to ask our new staff, what is it that, what are the needs that they are seeing fulfilled, or what are some needs that they would like us to consider in helping them be a firm member of our community? We continually engage our staff on district or school level committees so that voices and expertise are represented and contribute to a collaborative, shared decision-making structure. For as long as I've been in this district, this has been a highly valued focus and goal and purpose. And as you can see, there are district committees and opportunities that are provided this year, and then also school committees and opportunities. Most of the district, most of these committees that are listed are ongoing, so you would have seen evidence of it from the start of the strategic plan all the way to current day, and then some that are added on. So you'll see the English Language Arts Curriculum Review Committee, Schedule Committee for Friday, and a Social Studies Curriculum Review Committee added. We've also included a DEIB District Council that pulls representation from all of the district, all of the schools, to really work together and correspond and articulate with one another what the efforts are throughout the district and to help set some future action steps as well.
One of the other action steps related to Goal Three is to make sure that we're identifying the learning needs of the adults in our community. And so there's different mechanisms that are built into existing meetings to seek that information out, so that as we plan for Institute Day or speakers to come into our administrative council meetings, for example, that we're identifying the specific needs of the staff in those groups and getting the instruction or the professional development related to the topics of interest. And we've been purposeful in specifically with grade levels and department meetings over the last couple of years. We've extended that to our administrative council this year and identified themes for learning, and then each sort of taken responsibility for figuring out how to implement that. So for example, teacher evaluation was an element that we wanted to brush up on, if you will. And so we have had someone from the Danielson group come in and spend the day with us sort of recalibrating and looking at our strategy for evaluation, which ultimately will lead into a parajoint committee that we'll meet this year and reviewing our system and process and documents that we use for teacher evaluation. So really just looking for what the needs are, the adult learning needs, and then targeting a plan to address that. Culture and Climate Committee, this is a new committee for us this year. Dr. Kama's fully and Kelly Jack from lead our group. And this is equal representation from support staff to WEA, which is our teacher union, as well as administration. And it's really digging in on the new survey that we'll be using in place of five essentials, and how that relates to measuring what we've set out to measure. So our key performance indicators are often tied to the five essentials. And so now we have a new survey tool. We don't want to lose sight of measuring that. So what in this new survey, what questions, what information outcomes will be able to tie back to the key performance indicators? That's a very specific thread that we're looking at in this committee, but it's much broader than that. We want to, we really are seeking to understand what the needs of our staff are within our schools to be able to take action on it. We're starting with the new survey and making sure that that's tied to our key performance. We've had two meetings so far, and we have more. This next action step talks about potentially courageous conversation. And this was feedback that we leaned through the strategic planning process, through work we've done in student services and listening to the needs of the staff, and really trying to understand, how do we support everyone when having a courageous conversation? And so we started this fall when past 39 hit top their school year, having a speaker, Sue Mack, come in and talk with parents about how they can proactively and positively engage in IEP meetings and different conversations about their students with the school staff, really from a partnership standpoint. And Sue has a great perspective that she shared with the families that night. We're also looking to support our student services staff in that same process. How do they engage in a difficult conversation with a family in a productive, meaningful way, adding more strategies to their toolbox that already exists, but looking for further development in that? And that came as a result of staff asking for some of that support. So we're eager to implement that, starting probably during the February Institute Day, we narrowed it down to a few speakers and we discussed that, make the final decisions, knowing that it won't be just a one moment in time type of workshop. It'd likely start there and then need to continue on with some follow-up work that we'll do with staff through the late spring and early summer. And then our DEIB task force, so you heard Katie mention that we have sort of a district DEIB committee now that is sort of tying in all of our, all of the work being done at each of our schools. This task force that I'm speaking to now is very specific, and it started last year, and it's all related to the recruiting, hiring, and retaining of employees of color. And so again, it's a hybrid committee of teachers and support staff, board members, parents. And we met starting this fall for our second year, and we had made some, I think, really great traction in this last meeting. Our parent input has been invaluable in this process, and so we are expecting to be able to make some recommendations to administration about how to improve some of our practices in the area of recruiting, hiring, and retaining employees of color. So more to come in that down the road, but we have made some good headway early on. Yeah, I'll open for some questions.
That was great. I just was curious, Katie, with the exit surveys, is the participation, are the participation levels usually pretty strong?
So I'll answer that. Katie took the slide, but really, it's a process that I manage. Strong, I probably, I don't know that I would say strong. We push it out to anybody that has resigned from employment. Offering both the survey, like if you want to do it on the computer and not have to talk to anybody, we're fine with that, but also an entrance and exit interview, but either Harry or myself, or quite honestly, any administrator, but it usually follows to the career. I would say very qualitatively, maybe 30% make up on it. So not a great participation rate.
But they have both options, which is great.
Exactly. And those who have something to share will look it up.
Sure.
Sometimes on both, but certainly those personal things. Absolutely.
I just want to follow up on that, listen to it. Are there any themes that come out of the exit interviews?
There are. I think I shared a few this past October, and I haven't reviewed the information since, because I try to bring it together annually. But in October, we talked a little bit about how pre-support staff contract finishing, the reasons for leaving were related to pay, and how difficult perhaps the work environment was with the scheduling, and some of that seems to have resolved since the new contract was put into place. So yes, we do code the open-ended questions for meetings and try to determine if it's actionable.
So one more course in the culture and climate committee, I think that's great. Kind of what happened in that first, you're saying it's focused on the survey, and, but there's other things? I'm just wondering, is there anything more, like quicker actionable? Because I'm assuming, when does the survey come out?
February.
February. Yeah, it comes out in February, and I'll share that we also are engaging with the CSCI Leadership Organization. They're doing some training with us, with the team, starting first with the team and then potentially expanding out to our schools on culture and climate, the importance of it, what affects it. And they're going to help us really understand our data results, both at a school level and at a district level, and help guide some of those actionable items. So before the survey is administered, right now, we're just learning about it, and then they're going to help us really understand the survey and make some action steps that will help us to affect the culture and climate in our schools and at the district level as well. We're really excited about that partnership, largely because we've had five essentials for quite a while, and we've looked at it, we've tried to make sense of it, but we aren't experts in that area. So it's really nice to have a partner as we're making this transition, as we're moving to a tool that we have a bit more confidence in, in just a new perspective on school culture and climate, that we're going to have two experts helping guide this work for us, so.
Hang on. Just hearing anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, oh, did you call on me?
I did.
I, thank you. I have three comments. Yeah, I think one is, thank you for focusing on this. It's really impressive, impactful, so from my perspective. Two is, so I love the, kind of the, I forget what you call it, but for past 39, the focus on helping parents advocate for themselves. I wonder if there, you know, things we could, you know, that maybe all parents, you know, those not involved in past 39, you know, could learn from that kind of lesson? So, and then number three for me, you know, I really like the DEIB focus, and I wondered if there was a place for, I don't know about focusing, but including, encouraging teachers from underprivileged backgrounds in general. Like, I'm not a big fan of assuming that people of color from underprivileged backgrounds. So I think by opening up the scope to just generally people of underprivileged backgrounds joining the profession and encouraging that, that that might be something worth thinking about. I mean, it's not, it's not an easy profession to enter, from my perspective. It's relatively low-paid, so it assumes a lot of, you know, parental and other support to start in on a career like this, you know? And then it takes many years to work your way up, you know, the salary scale, you know, it's just not something that someone from an underprivileged background, economically speaking, can easily pull off, from my perspective, to be a teacher with the, you know, educational requirements and credential requirements.
I think what I'm hearing is expand the, our considerations of diversity, equity, and inclusion to include other groups that may also struggle to find a sense of belonging or support within our system.
Yeah.
Thank you. Amy?
I might be able to speak to that, but Heather, because I'm on that committee, and then you fell in any holes, I think you're totally right, John, and I think the requirements to become a teacher, if you're looking at a WEA job particularly, requires a lot of education and financial investment in your career. So I support that entirely. I think at this point, it would be hard to change tack, because we're about ready to present recommendations. It's been a two-year committee, but, so that's something for us to consider in the next iteration of the committee, to invest time and research into. But I do wonder if there will be things in these recommendations that will speak to that, which will be coming later this school year.
Thanks, Amy.
Heather? Yeah. Other? John, did you get all your questions asked?
Yeah, yeah, three comments. I am good.
Paley?
Another quick follow-up question. With the culture and climate committee being a new one, how is it determined the makeup of that committee?
Thanks, that's a good question. So we asked each of our union leadership teams to identify members from their group to participate between that, and also trying to make sure that every school is represented on the team, that serve to make our competition along with our administrators as well. So again, trying to keep it balanced, but also making sure that this is, this really is a shared leadership opportunity, where all three groups, employee groups within our district are really coming together to try and make a difference in how it's run at our school. Thank you.
Yeah? Thank you. As always, this is really informative to get these briefings.
All right. We are now ready for school finance. Mr. Caesarretti?
We have a robust agenda that I'm going to turn over to Corey, I believe.
I think, I think we're going to start with Kristin Swanson, who has a quick update on SR3 funds, and annually, we need to review our COVID mitigation plan, although I know many of us wish we didn't have to. It's part of the requirement of the SR3 grant funds. So we're here to do both of that with you, and I'll turn it over to Kristin.
Okay. So thank you. Yes, we're going to do a brief little reminder history walk on SR3 or our SR grants, and just do the presentation for our final year here. So as many may remember, COVID was here a few years ago, and in response... And in response, the federal government released a series of grants to help support educational agencies in managing the effects of COVID. So there was the first one, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act, and that ended in September of 2020. The next was the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, which ended in September of 2023. And the final was the American Rescue Plan, which started in March 2020 and ends in September 30th of 2024. So this was the biggest amount, um, that we had. And we had to, at the beginning of this grant, we presented a three-year plan, which we then amended last year because needs have changed as a result of, of COVID. Here are the original areas that we looked at for the SR3 grant. We used, um, a, a chunk of the funding on summer school or we allocated it for curriculum writing, summer work, uh, as well as social and emotional clubs for students at the five-eight level to help increase that sense of belonging and address those social emotional needs students had. We also used varsity tutors to help provide some, um, additional tutoring services for our students who were demonstrating, um, what they called learning loss as a result of COVID. We bought, um, a variety of supplies and materials. Uh, we've used a lot of funding on professional development in terms of responsive classroom foundations, DEIB, a variety of different professional development activities. We purchased the shade structures for all of the buildings to provide an additional learning space for students. And we used some for our parent education events. At this point in time, we have $217,000 left of the, the SR3 funds. And our recommendation is to continue those, um, clubs at the five-eight level. That has been a very successful way to help our students feel more of a sense of belonging. So we would continue to use funds for, to pay for, um, salaries for that, for our teachers to continue those clubs, um, to purchase additional supplies and materials in terms of curricular resources and to continue professional development activities, primarily foundations, but also with some responsive classroom and DEIB. Any questions about that?
So when, uh, the SR funds are gone, are we just imagining that we're going to continue all these things and pull them in? I mean, I know we don't need any more shade structures, but like some of the things like the clubs, right? That have been very successful, we're just going to pull them into the budget?
Uh, some will be, will be assumed by us and others will not. So, right, the shade structure, some of those things that don't, aren't recurring. I think one of the critical questions we'll need to ask is some of the tutoring and summer programming, how we move forward with that? If, um, we continue to subsidize some of that? Or, um, if, if we find that we don't need it, that was specifically targeted at some learning loss during COVID? And it may be that we don't need those supports to continue to be available. So we, we will take a look at each thing and we certainly will come back, um, to the board if we need to make some budget adjustments. I think the one thing for sure that we feel pretty strongly about is the clubs have been pretty successful. And so we definitely want to see those continue one way or the other.
Any other questions? The other, um, thing that we, I'll, we'll just share is we did update our COVID mitigation plan. We do have to do that, um, every six months per the SR grant. So, um, that has been updated for this school year and primarily, there's not a lot of changes because the last time we did it, we don't, we were already mask optional. We did reference more the CDC in this one because that's what now IDPH and ISV is referencing, or the CDC recommendations. So, anyone has any questions? No, otherwise?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we have employees that have COVID issues still from, from that first round?
We do have people who continue to, um, test positive for COVID.
Okay.
And we follow the, the, the recommendation is you, you isolate or stay home for five days and then wear a mask for five days. We do continue to have people who mask on a daily basis at schools, um, or just when they're not feeling well, or if there are people around them not feeling well. And that seems to be kind of more accepted and acceptable among everybody. It's sort of a, a choice and, and nobody seems to be having a big issue with it.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Okay, now we're going with Cory, right?
All right. So now we will, uh, let Cory talk through the five-year financial projections and then we'll move right into the D39 financial review and fees. Cory?
Yes. All right. So he'll walk us through a lot of the assumptions that are built into the five, the baseline five-year projections. Since there's a lot of different things I'm going to go over as I walk through all this, feel free to ask a question if there's a specific area that someone has a question about. All right. So starting on the revenue side, we're going to start with property taxes. It's our primary revenue source. So for the main assumption of what do we use for CPI in this, in this projection? We have one year where we know that the applicable amount is five percent. Then for the current calendar year, um, through calendar year twenty-five, was able to work with some of our vendors and got Bloomberg CPI estimate, which is a collection of economists' projections. We've got four point one, two, seven, and then two point three. And then the last year is just a flat two percent. Right now through ten months, and I think we find out another month of CPI, either tomorrow or Wednesday, we're sitting at about three point seven, I believe. So we're, we're trending right where the Bloomberg projection estimates. Then as we move down to like new property growth, that's another large number, our large impact each year. Our tenure average is fifteen point five million. I've, I've got some information here of what do we see over the last ten years? Our low point was six point nine. That's probably the oldest of the ten years back when, um, we were kind of coming out of, out of a recessionary time. And then the, the high point is twenty-four point nine. So you see a range of, you know, that additional dollar value of low of two hundred thousand up to seven hundred and forty-six. So it can have a, a really big impact, um, depending on what comes out each year. I will point out that as we think about, you know, what is like point one or point two percent really mean in any given year? If our, our overall operating levy is roughly sixty-five million dollars. So every time that CPI factor changes by point one percent, that's worth about sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, then our collection, our historical collection, net collection rate, which is collections minus any refunds processed by Cook County is ninety-eight point six. Uh, so we've got that built into the forecast. And just for reference, uh, if, if the collection rate were to change by half percent, positive or negative, um, that's worth about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Now we're dropping down to interest revenue. So, um, for the first time, we, we've actually got some substantial amounts projected in our interest revenue. I think it's worth pointing out that fiscal year twenty-three, as rates were rising rapidly, the operating funds collected one point one million in revenue. I've got them budgeted for about one six five, one point six five for the current year. And thus far, we're, we're tracking nicely for that. And, and what's really interesting is if Cook County had been on time with the second installment bills, that one point six five probably is two million or two point one million. But then we, you know, as I think about like, oh, how do we project out? We're, we're, from my perspective, we're kind of at a historical high in this particular line item. Well, if I look back over the last eighteen years, which is including a period of about three years before the recession occurred, you, you see the average over that whole time is, um, just four hundred and ten thousand annually. So as I was thinking about like, well, what's the, you know, what's the best approach for us? You know, what made me feel most comfortable was, uh, what, taking steps down year by year with the interest revenue, knowing that's likely what wants to occur. So for fiscal year twenty-five, the, the, the amount in there is one point two million. Then dropped it down to almost seven hundred thousand, then five. And then the last couple of years at four hundred thousand, um, which is close to our average. Couple other things I, I just, I, as I was gathering information, I thought was interesting. So in the last eighteen years, our lowest year for interest revenue was fiscal year twelve, and it was just eleven thousand dollars. That's when rates were like point oh-two percent. You're basically getting nothing. And then just also for, I think it's worth noting, for six straight years from fiscal year eleven to twenty sixteen, the interest revenue was below a hundred thousand. So that, kind of the thought process, at least from my perspective, of why we would pull this amount back and not just assume that we're going to collect a million and a half every year in interest revenue. Our local fees, which is another, a substantial, uh, budget line item in, in the Ed Fund and Transportation. We, we've incorporated our current fee structures and, and our approach to fees. For, for this baseline, um, scenario, our, our keep thirty-nine, uh, line item, fee line item, assumes that the fee remains the same and it's based upon a, a count of two hundred and seventy-six students. Our evidence-based funding, um, which is our primary state funding source, uh, remains flat. Realistically, we get about what I've seen in my few years here. Each year that goes up about two or three thousand dollars. And then on the federal aid side, uh, keeping those federal funds relatively flat. And with one exception is when fiscal year twenty-four ends, removing, um, that SR funding is, is that will not be available to us anymore. And then on the corporate personal property replacement tax side, uh, just a couple of notes. The amount compared to fiscal year twenty-four budget is flat in the projections. But I wanted to just point out some historical information. So in fiscal year twenty-one, that line item was seven hundred thousand. Then in twenty-two and twenty-three, the actuals were just over one point five million, so we doubled. Saw a nice jump up. That always made me a little nervous that we were going to see a, a drop back. For fiscal year twenty-four, our budget incorporates a number of one point one million, which coincides with the Illinois Department of Revenue's estimate for that line item. So that makes me feel a little bit better about in, keeping that line item flat. The one point one is, you know, roughly halfway between where we were before the large jump and then, and then what we've seen as our high point. Now moving to the expenditure side. Um, since we have, uh, settled contracts with, uh, both of our bargaining units, for certified salaries, we've got that incorporated in, in here for the last four years, the WA agreement. And then we have an estimate for the, the last year of fiscal year twenty-nine. What can always have like a ni, a, a nice positive impact is the number of retirements. So I've listed here the number of known certified staff retirements following the end of the fiscal years listed. So at the end of the current school year, um, I have twelve, uh, twelve staff retiring. And then you see twenty-five through twenty-seven is a more typical number. And then fiscal year twenty-eight, we have nine. I think the, the, as I understand it, the people who would have put in for retirement for fiscal years twenty-four and twenty-eight, those were people who were putting in their notice in the last year of a collective bargaining agreement. Pretty typical across most school districts that if there is some sort of retirement incentive available to teaching staff that in the last year of a contract is coming up, someone's thinking about retiring, they will typically put in, not knowing how a new contract might shake out. For support staff, we've got, uh, two, the first two years of the projections, uh, are per their bargaining agreement. And then the last three are just estimated. Uh, same, similar with exempt and administrative staff salaries tied to, uh, got that tied to CPI based upon historical practice. Our health insurance cost, um, assumption, uh, similar to what we've used in the past is, is, is five percent. Still a little bit early to know where we're heading in the, in the current year. Usually once we get to around February, March is when Dr. Glacki and I will start to get information on how things were, are going and what the renewals might look like for, for the next year. In the purchase service realm, uh, the insurance primarily liability and, and workers comp and the tort fund, projected the increase in a range of five to eight percent. And then all other purchase services, I've got a range of two to six percent per year. Uh, our supplies and materials, which would include the various utilities, electrical, natural gas, water, they're projected to increase by two to five percent. And then I've got an assumed three percent for our, um, special ed tuition. One caveat there is, is we do see some fluctuations, really just a reflection of what do, what, what kind of needs do our students have in any one year? That line item could change several hundred thousand up or down. But it, but we were just assuming that flat three percent. All right. So the next assumption I want to, I want to move over to is something that we look at a couple of times a year. So our capital projects, five-year projections. So if we think back a little bit to when we were doing the current five-year strategic plan, coincided with kind of identifying, well, what, what projects do we want to accomplish through this, this five-year window? And, you know, thanks to some, some positive, you know, financial things happening for the district, we've been able to tackle a lot of them. And there are still a few that are on that list, you know, coming up in twenty-four. A big one was doing that junior high roof replacement. And beyond twenty-four, the other two large items that we had definitely targeted for that window were replacing windows at the junior high and then adding classroom air conditioning to the first floor. I think there's about twelve or thirteen classrooms left at the junior high that we're targeting for the summer at twenty-five. But as we look at our five-year, um, you know, outlook as far as capital projects, maybe a little different than what I've done in prior years. I, and I've referenced that sometime after, after the holidays, we get into the new calendar year. I'll be bringing back information and hopefully having some conversations about how do we want to prioritize? What projects are available to us beyond these last two projects at the, at the junior high that we're targeting? So as I've thought about, you know, how do I incorporate that into the five-year projections? And, and so what I've done is I've got some amounts, um, as placeholders. And, and as we, we will, you know, certainly have conversations about those in the new year. But this is kind of where, where our outlook looks right now. And this is what's been incorporated into our, our five-year projections. Okay. So now that we've kind of talked about our assumptions, here's our operating funds. This is kind of, this is our focus every year. This is the summary of our operating funds at a very high level. Um, starting with the left-hand column, that's our board-approved fiscal year twenty-four budget. And then we've got five years of, of, of projection, of projected in financial information. What maybe doesn't come through on here is you go to that first column in the, the bottom left and you see that we're at fifty point seven at the end of fiscal year twenty-four. What that implies is a fifty-one point one percent starting fund balance for fiscal year twenty-four. So, um, as you look through here, uh, you know, I, I always gravitate middle of the page surplus deficit row. You know, starting at five point seven million and then over on the far right, it's, it's to three point two. Those last two years reflecting that, you know, there won't be any keep thirty-nine fees, just not available to us as the state mandates all day kindergarten. Um, so from, from my perspective, um, what you see right there is, um, districts that are in a solid position, over above our, our forty percent target in, in all years. Move to the next. Here's a, uh, graph that just shows the prior five years and then fiscal year twenty-four, the budget year, and then heading out to the very end. So, um, as you can see, you know, we, we certainly had some years where we were up around seventy percent. Spent some of that down, invested in our facilities. And more recently, we've been in the, you know, mid to low fifty percent range with some projections to, you know, take us down into the forties. This particular, uh, slide shows revenues of the operating funds. You know, visuals are nice. You see on the bottom, bottom part, um, the revenue, the revenue growth. But in particular, what, what I always, you know, like to highlight for a community like D39 is looking at that graph in the bottom left. You know, looking at, you know, over ninety percent is, is local, other local sources and property taxes. So, you know, by and large, when we have discussions about the revenue side, you know, nearly everything starts and ends with, within our D39 boundaries. Yeah, we get some state and federal help, but by and large, that's, that's where our funding comes from. And then we go to the expenditure side. Similarly, And then, we go to the expenditure side, similarly, have the assumptions, all those assumptions built into here, and, like I said, similarly to the revenue, I gravitate toward the visual of, you know, 80% of our funds being tied up in the salary and benefits, which is to be expected. Then, one last visual we usually show, here's a graph that just compares operating revenues to operating expenditures. The top part of this page, you have five years of actual data where the revenues exceed expenditures, you see our budget year, solidly in that position again, and then even looking out, it's always nice to look out and know that even in those far-out years where some of the assumptions start to build up, the revenues are still exceeding and showing that D-39 is on a strong graph. There are several more pages of, you know, shows each individual fund. I won't go through each one of those. Most of our focus is on the operating fund level, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has about this.
John, it doesn't look like anyone here has any questions. Are we okay to move on to the next topic?
I have, I have one comment, completely off-the-ball question. So, yeah, thank you, Corey, for walking us through that. Yeah, I think your assumptions are consistent with what we agree with generally, to be conservative. I always worry about things that we don't have control over, like, you know, legislative mandates, so, you know, kind of like full-day kindergarten and things that we can't really anticipate. So I was curious, and I, I don't, I assume you know because you know everything, how's the teachers' pension doing? Like, is the state, you know, going to be okay carrying forward their burden into the indefinite future of funding that thing? Or is that ever, you know, going to end up on our books, you know what I mean, in our financial statements someday?
You know, it's, so, I think I've been in this industry roughly 20 years now, and what's interesting is, for the first, like, say, 15, it always felt like, oh, this might, this might happen, and then somebody would throw out an idea, and people would get all worked up, and then nothing would happen. It has been eerily quiet on that front. I don't, I don't have the exact number of years, but even a little bit before COVID started, it felt like, like it had, like, nothing, I'm sure there's conversations continually happening, like, what are we going to do, what are we going to do? But I don't feel like there's been the same level, especially when I have meetings with other business officials and some of the communications that I get from various sources that are, you know, whether they're monthly updates or whatever, doesn't seem like that's been a big conversation. Now, that's not to say that TRS is, like, all of a sudden in a great spot. I think if I, just off the top of my head, I think they're only like 40% to 50% funded, which you compare that to IMRF, which is, you know, 95% to 100%. So, I, I think it's always a possibility for that to happen, but it has seemed to, at least the talk about it has seemed to die down recently.
Yeah, and I'll share just somewhat relatedly. At superintendent meetings, there has been less conversation about the cost shift, but more conversation about recruiting and retaining younger employees to the profession, and much of that discussion has circled around the tier-two employees who would be entering the field at this point, and recognizing that some of those benefits that previously were available to teachers or teacher candidates are no longer available because of how everything has been restructured. And so, I think that's a concern for us in leadership within school districts throughout Illinois that we're continuing to struggle. Certainly, we tend to have a really deep pool of candidates for most positions, but those districts that struggle a little bit more are really starting to struggle a lot, simply because the benefits, the pay in the pension are no longer attracting younger generations of teachers into the field. And I would say the same would be true about administrative positions. Many districts are struggling to recruit and hire people into the administrative ranks, largely for similar reasons, so that's a topic of conversation.
I mean, I think if anything, like, yeah, now that Dr. Krim slowly mentioned that, one thing that people have talked about at business meetings is that tier-two, and when you think about, even some of the conferences that I've gone to where there has been conversations about, you know, the assumption is, if you're a lifelong teacher, you graduate, you work your years, and then when you hit, you know, late 50s or 60, you're able to retire, well, there's actually been sessions where you need to, like, work with those young tier-two because, okay, well, now that the age that you're eligible to collect your pension, which is also probably not as high, you need to be able to bridge that gap, and not everybody understands. So it is, it's a challenge, I mean, I don't know what will happen, but I know that that's, I think there will probably be a lot of talk about what to do with tier-two going forward.
Well, appreciate those thoughts. Something to think about.
Absolutely. Thank you for the questions. John, it doesn't look like anyone else here has additional follow-up questions. May we move on to the next topic?
Let's do it.
Okay. So, the next topic is our KEEP 39 financial review and fees. The board will remember, at the last committee of the whole meeting in November, you started your review of these fees for setting them for the upcoming school year, for the '24-'25 school year. We talked about a variety of options, and the board directed some action from the district administrators. One was to provide some additional research. We provided that to board members. A second was to look at what actually needs to happen, kind of map out those steps for transition to full-day kindergarten, and how much time will be needed, what's the latest possible date to make that decision before we start implementing? And so Katie Lee will talk about that. And then, the final thing, and probably the most critical thing for today, is that the board asked us to make some projections on a variety of options. Those options include maintaining the KEEP 39 be as flat for the upcoming school year, what does that do to the budget and the projections and all of that. The second is to align the fees with some element of payback for the construction, which is initially what the board set out to do, paying back those capital investments as well as covering the operational costs. So if we step away from covering the operational costs, meaning the board is subsidizing the operational costs, but the fees go to matching the initial investment, what would those look like for the next three years? And then, the final option is really looking at the board subsidizing or taking on the remaining portion of the capital investment, and instead having the fees match the operational costs of running the program for the next three years, or some shortened duration thereof. And so, we have those options available. I will highlight for the board, I know you've received this in your memo, but we would need to know by April if we are to begin planning for full-day kindergarten in the year following. So by this April, April 2024, that would be the latest date in order to get all the action steps needed to begin implementing full-day kindergarten in the year following, which is the '25-'26 school year. So the same would be true for the following year, and then the following year after that. We know that by 2027, we must, based on current legislation, be prepared to offer full-day kindergarten. Between now and then, it really is at the board's discretion. We currently have a really, a successful half-day kindergarten program. It's complemented by an optional enrichment program, which is an extended-day program that's available within our schools for our families. We've had some great success with that KEEP 39 program, but we recognize that our community and members of the board are also interested in exploring that transition to full-day kindergarten, and does it make sense to try and do that sooner? So, that's kind of laying the groundwork. Corey has some information to share regarding the projections and the specific scenarios that the board requested us to cross out, and then Katie has a quick update regarding the steps that will be needed to transition to full-day kindergarten. Corey, you're going to start us off?
Can I ask one clarifying question?
Yes.
I just want to make sure. So, if the board says, oh, we want to go to full-day kindergarten as soon as possible, as soon as possible as in a year and a half from now, based on all that has to get done?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we would need that decision by April. Certainly, the sooner the better, but if we can have that decision by April, we can plan to implement, we believe we have ample time, in light of everything else that we're doing, ample time to be prepared to offer that in the '25-'26 school year. Thank you.
Okay. Follow-up on Lisa's question. So is that the fourth, the fourth choice, basically?
That's correct. So, the fourth option that we'll talk about is continuing with the KEEP 39 program for next year with a really rigorous schedule, planning for implementing full-day kindergarten in the year following. So, give us the opportunity to walk through the scenarios that the board requested of us, and for Katie to give a quick update, and then we'll be open for discussion. And ultimately, this is really a board decision. Each of us probably sit in a little bit different place with regards to these decisions, but this is really a financial decision at this point, and it needs to be a decision directed by the board. Our hope is that we can receive some direction today and then plan for an action item at next week's Board of Education meetings, that those fees can be set, families can be notified of what the fees will be for the upcoming year, and we can launch registration in January. Corey?
Yep. All right. So we have four options, and as we dive into them, like, as we were discussing, the primary focus would be like, you know, getting some direction for what we're going to do for the '24-'25 school year, even though that the information provided does have some assumptions reaching beyond, beyond just next year. So, option one, that's kind of our status quo. The KEEP fee remains the same. The underlying assumption, you know, going back to the 64-60 annual fee, was that we would cover operational costs plus an additional amount that would allow the district to recoup that $9.95 million construction investment to get the buildings up and running. An assumption is, starting in '27-'28, you know, no fees even allowed to be charged. So, these numbers are similar to what we just saw in the baseline. We're starting at, you know, 50.7, and then ending at 45.76%. Option two is...
Corey, can you just go back for a second?
Yeah, sure.
Can you just look at that for a second?
Sure.
I mean, this is an important slide.
Yeah. Corey, can I ask you a question on this slide? So, to the point, really the bottom, you know, whatever line, where you can see the impact over time?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, certainly the top seven lines, there will be some changes in the numbers as I go through each scenario, but really where I gravitate towards is that bottom row, particularly the farther right, the last few years, what do we see as the impact as we page through each of these options? Yes. All right. So option two is taking a look and saying, okay, this is a, consider this like 100% construction payback scenario. Under this scenario, yes, kind of looking at things a little differently, knowing that things have changed, the state love foreseeing some changes on us, we're saying, okay, what have the fees collected over the life of the KEEP program? What would it take to get to $9.95 million in fees collected? And then, this is a little bit different way of looking at it, in that no operational costs would be covered under this scenario. It would take dropping the fees for the last three years to $5,525 per student, and as we look at what that does now, okay, the first year is the same, we see a slight drop in the next three years, and then we end at 44.8% fund balance versus the 40, a little over 45 we had in the first option. Option three is taking, taking a look at it from a bit of a different lens compared to the first two, and it really says, okay, what are the operational costs to run a KEEP 39 program for the next three years? And so what we did is, we estimated, we know what those costs are in the current school year, we know what, roughly what the staffing cost increase, salaries and benefits will be, some of the other miscellaneous costs with that. We estimated those costs for the last three years, and then developed based upon a 276 student enrollment, what would that fee need to be to cover those costs? That fee would be $4,392 for the last three years. And so, in this assumption for option three, we've got the fee set there for fiscal years '25, '26, '27. Starting off, it does drop down a little bit, so instead of being in the 44% range, now we're at 43.71 for option three. And that is the, covering the operational cost for the last three years. And then, option four is similar to option three in that it's $4,392, but it's just for one year, and then, starting in the following year, '25-'26, we would have an all-day kindergarten offering. And, really, in the first two columns, it's very similar, but when you get to the last four, is where you start to see the change, and then go to the bottom right for the last two years, and we have the operating funds ending at just over 40% for each of those two years compared to the prior three years. And then, switch to Katie Lee.
Okay.
Sorry, Katie, I'm sorry. Hey, Corey, does that last projection include, you know, the legislatively mandated full-day coming in, whatever year that is?
Yes, essentially, the last, the last option, the last two options, so option three and option four, or 3B, depending on how you're timing it. It essentially is just moving to implementing full-day kindergarten two years earlier than is legislatively mandated.
Okay.
So, option three provides for the district to move to full-day kindergarten in 2027. Option four would mean that we would pursue a much more rigorous schedule in that transition and accomplish the list that Katie started to show over just a year and a half, instead of over the next three years, and we would be implementing the full-day kindergarten program in 2025, two years in advance of what the state is requiring.
Thank you.
On to slide two, John. So, 40.8, right, gets us really close to that line. What happens in the out-years even after that, Corey? I mean, one of the things we want to always avoid is going back for referendum, if possible, right? And so, does the line continue to slide, Corey? Kind of, and how fast do we approach kind of that line in option four here?
Well, the projections that I did end at fiscal year '29.
I know.
But, like, let's say I extended this out to seven, or typically what you see in nearly any projection is that you would see things slowly, like, based upon the assumptions, like a slow decline. But, the reality is, before we got to fiscal year '29, we're going to all make hundreds of the of decisions, positive and negative, some we control, some we don't. Even before we get to, you know, two years from now, we're going to make lots and lots of decisions that will change things. For me, you know, what might happen beyond 2029? I guess I, it's nice to know where we're heading, but we will have made so many decisions. Where, if you think about it, in any case, like, we will, by the time we reach that point, we will have renegotiated both of our bargaining agreements. You know, we will have made other decisions, you know, larger scale decisions, you know, could relate to capital projects. I mean, there are many, many different things, so.
It really likely means that between now and 2029, the board will be forced to make some more difficult decisions than you would have needed to make otherwise. The prioritization that you'll need to do for capital improvements moving forward will be probably more restricted than what you would have been able to do otherwise. So thinking about today's meeting in particular, as we reviewed the construction projects, those are really important projects. And I know if you're an audience member, a community member out there, a parent maybe listening to this, they don't seem like really big deals within the maintenance of our schools and the ongoing operations of our schools. All of those projects are really necessary to continue to offer the really strong programming in safe, healthy environments for our students and for our staff. And so all of those things are necessary for us to continue to plan proactively. So Cory's right, you'll make hundreds of decisions between now and 2029, so to project beyond 2029 is really too difficult to do. But it's really nice that the board has this threshold that you're constantly trying to maintain because that does give you an eye on what decisions you can comfortably make and which decisions maybe you're a little less comfortable with making. So the good news is even with option four, you maintain that 40% fund balance, which is ultimately the board's goal. Between now and then, you'll just have to make some really critical decisions about what projects are taken on. And again, whether that's capital investment projects, facility improvement kinds of projects, whether it's curriculum reviews and updates, which are costly endeavors as well, staff contracts will be reviewed between now and then. And so it really is just a matter of how you invest the funds that are available to us. But you are right, the goal, I think, of the board at this point is not to have to go out for referendum. Our buildings are in really good shape, but that's largely due to the really proactive and thoughtful investment that the board continues to make in our facilities so that we don't have to go out and ask for a community-wide referendum.
Right. I mean, the last thing we want to do is make fiscally irresponsible decisions that put us on a bad trajectory. And that's what I'm just trying to understand, that no matter what choice we make, are we being fiscally responsible?
I also think this, we're making a really important, major decision here, and soon we'll also be talking about other fees for things that are optional, that the board has supported to some extent, like transportation and lunch. So I think that'll be helpful for us later in the academic year. And today, we're just thinking of this, you know, that'll tie in as well in terms of these projections, potentially.
Yeah. And the other thing I think the board needs to just keep in mind is that as a district, we are a district that's locally funded. And so it's a matter of who is responsible for paying for what. And certainly, if it's a program that's available to all, that should come out of our general funding sources. And the board has taken a stance that those optional, additional programs should be user fee-based. And so you can certainly change that at any point. You can decide how much you want to subsidize those user fee-based programs, and you've made those tough decisions in the past, and you'll continue to make those. So that includes lunch, transportation, some of the extended day programs, some of the athletics and musical programs, band and orchestra that are operating out of the district as well. So, thank you.
Are we going to jump into the financial discussion, or are we going to wait till Katie does what it takes to get ready?
Yeah, if we could just, it's, I think it's just one or two slides. So it's just, it's again, just addressing what the board wanted to know about how long it will take and what kind of work needs to be accomplished to transition from what we currently are doing to a full day kindergarten program, which, again, they look quite different. There's some advantages to what we're doing right now, some flexibility, and to transition to a full day kindergarten program, there's some work that needs to be done. So I don't want that to be overlooked. I know for families, sometimes it feels like my child is at school, they're at school, it all looks about the same. It really, in our world, looks quite different. And so Katie has taken the time to map out what those changes might involve. Katie?
Yes, just to share an idea of whenever the decision is made, the timeframe is about a year and a half, as it's been repeated, because we value that, you know, the transitioning from a half-day to a full day is a really huge opportunity to reflect on programming because there are additional pieces that would be added. But I want to start with the fact that our district has had an academic half-day program that has fulfilled all requirements and have met the needs of our students. But I think that the additional time that will be provided offers new opportunities as well. And so what we would need to do is establish a committee of teacher representatives and also administrators. We always like to bring in the voices. They will represent and move along this project list so that we can guide. But then eventually, we bring in all of our staff into transitioning to a full day program. So simply, you know, as simple as adjusting the school day hours to reflect a full day attendance, we would also need to reflect and update any kindergarten scheduling for full day content area, time allocations. It's an opportunity for us to think about what we offer as far as related arts offerings in our kindergarten school day. Reviewing the standards and the learning goals is really about prioritizing the learning goals for the students, so we have an opportunity to expand upon that as well in all the areas. So if you can imagine, we would have to sit down in all of the content areas and do a full review and reflection. It's math, English language, arts, and for kindergarten, it's really three strands, the foundational literacy skills, reading and writing, and then social studies and science that we offer. Identify and see if there are any needs additionally for curricular resources or support, or supportive resources, and engaging all kindergarten teachers and facilitating the planning process. I think one of the most important things is to manage the change for them, going from a half-day to a full day, and offering them time to gather together in those articulations and collaborations. So we would want specific time throughout the year to be able to do that, so they feel really confident walking into the fall of whichever year you choose, saying this is a full day academic kindergarten, and this is what we know to do for our new students. We always identify some summer writing projects because there are some items that would benefit from some pre-planning. And so we have a committee of teachers who volunteer their time over the summer and work on specific projects that would really help implement or ease the implementation into the new school year. And then if needed, there may be some additional personnel that might be required in order to help us with a full day program that we don't currently have, but we don't know that until we go through the full program reflection. Any questions about this?
I just have a quick question. What time do the kids go through after school? Like, what time do they end? Is it the same time?
3:15, Monday through Thursday, and on Fridays, it's early, early, so 2:15.
So it aligns with our first through fourth grade schedule? That was my question too. In kindergarten, right now, kindergarten used to release prior to lunch, like a half-hour earlier. We adjusted it, I think, this year to release when the students who stay for KEEP 39 move to lunch. The students who don't stay, who are only here for the half-day kindergarten program, they are released home at that point.
Okay. But it mirrors one through four?
Yeah. Exactly. Yeah.
John, I don't know how well you can see us. Do you want us to go around and say which option we prefer?
There might be some questions. I think Lisa has a discussion.
Okay. Well, that's what, I mean, yeah, I was thinking.
You guys are great.
Thanks, John. I think Lisa was going to start, and then it looks like Ann and Allison have questions.
So I've been thinking about this, right, like we all have. And I guess John and I were here at the time that KEEP 39 was created. And so I just want to give some historical perspective. So, and first, I want to start with, at the time, we looked at the research, right? And the research hasn't changed, that for a community like ours, this isn't because we're giving our kids a competitive advantage, it's because we want all-day kindergarten. It's like something that we want, right? That the community for decades has won. And our job as board members is to kind of help represent the needs of the community. And so the time that we created KEEP 39, I mean, was really different. That community sentiment was against spending. In fact, we had trouble getting through a levy, which historically just sailed through and was, in my mind, common sense, that if you don't keep up with inflation, we're going to head towards that line of having to go for referendum. And those who were here at the time of referendum, it was brutal, right? It wasn't a given, and we were facing serious cuts. So for me, I remember those days. And as we get to the 40 line, I'm like, okay, like, warning, right? We need to be very careful because if, and I'm not saying I know what we should do, but I'm just saying, we have to really be aware that if we make this choice, it changes choices we're going to make down the road that we don't know we need to make. The community's changed, in my mind. When I look at, we passed that big water project. That was a bigger increase to my water bill than any referendum we've, I mean, any, like, just levy we've passed. And only a small percentage of the village really benefited from that, you know, water reservoir project. So it shows to me that maybe community sentiment is changing. And so for something like KEEP, where not everybody benefits, the community would be okay with that. I think members here who have children in KEEP 39 still probably have a better sense. But if I just go by, who's coming to me, who's sending letters? It's the parents of the kids who would benefit, and I'm not hearing from anyone else that this would be a problem. I think this is a smaller change, right? It's not going to impact your tax bill if we do it. So I just want to say, I'm interested in hearing what everybody else says, but I wanted to give you context that forever, we've said, if it doesn't benefit everyone, people have to pay for it. And that's what we've been doing. And maybe there's a hybrid, right? That instead of, I'm just throwing option five out there, I think we should for sure lower KEEP 39 fees. And maybe there's an option where we just do the operational cost and do it for two years, not three. I don't know. But I do feel like public sentiment from when we created KEEP 39 has changed. And I rest my case. Thank you for listening.
No, thank you. Actually, I was going to say, along the same lines of what Lisa was saying, I just wanted to go back to some of the historical information, which I think is really important, and Lisa has mentioned it before, which has been very helpful for all of us who weren't here during those decisions. And, you know, my appreciation for those decisions and where that has led us to today, and, you know, the fact that we need a year and a half, we'd be in a much different place if we hadn't done, you know, the work that has been done with KEEP and the investment and the capital improvements. So how grateful I am that that work has been done. And we've also learned a great deal over the past few years, which is excellent. And, you know, just looking at the numbers, again, this is not a project that will benefit the entire community at large specifically. However, we have learned that, you know, our participation rates are around 98%, I think. So really, it does benefit everyone who is entering District 39, or there is a great interest for every student for them entering District 39. So I think that that is a, you know, a major consideration here. Couple of thoughts that I have. One, you know, April for decision for 25, 26, I would hope that if we are leaning toward that decision, that we could make it earlier, and that that would be helpful because it is a lot of work, obviously. So, you know, if we can put that on the board to make the decision any sooner, and if that is helpful, I certainly support that. And I agree with Lisa that the fees should come down. In thinking through this, I feel like the real adjustment when the fees end is when the transition is made in school, in the classroom, that those two should be tied together. If we can bring the fees down, and then, for instance, if we offer in 25, 26, that's when there is no fee because that's when we have made the change in the classroom. Along those lines, I would hope that we could be, you know, we have the ability to lead and not wait for the mandate if this is the direction that, you know, the state is requiring. And I think we have, you know, the resources and the ability to, you know, get there before the actual date at which it is legislated.
Yeah, actually, it was a question sort of about the historical thinking, so I think that that was answered. The only other question that I have, I think, was, you said that that current KEEP 39 kind of meets the requirement? Did you mean like, I don't know if there are like statutory requirements for defining what kindergarten is or not, but...
I'm sorry, not KEEP 39, but our kindergarten, our half-day kindergarten program. We have, you know, standards that, right. So the KEEP 39 was created in-house. You know, when, once we were given the go-ahead, we sat down with our kindergarten teachers and a committee and created that KEEP 39 programming and wrote down what we valued, what our students would really benefit from and things. So that's a fully enrichment and extension program.
I have a question. You may not know this yet, but is it clear if we are required to offer a half-day program also, once we offer full day?
Right. So you'll remember, we talked about this a little bit at the November meeting. Currently, state statute, state requirements indicate that we will need to make available a half-day kindergarten option. The way in which we do that is what's a little blurry to us right now because in learning from some of our colleagues, some other districts, both locally and across the state, everyone's kind of doing that differently. Back in the day, I hate to say back in the day, but, you know, five, six, seven, eight years ago, when people were starting to move toward full-day kindergarten at a more robust pace, it was very clear from the state that you had to offer an actual, all standards of kindergarten must be available to those who enroll in a half-day kindergarten program. Now, it seems more and more districts have moved or are moving to full-day kindergarten, and the way in which families choose to access a half-day program, if they do, looks a little different from district to district. So again, it's... So again, it's a little blurry, but right now they're saying, yes, we have to make available the option. The other thing to keep in mind is that kindergarten is actually not a mandatory grade within the state of Illinois. So the standards, which are the academic standards aligned with a kindergarten program, it's all a little murky, because the reality is, school enrollment isn't mandated for a kindergarten age student. First grade, you must be attending school or participating in some kind of school program. Kindergarten is is really optional. We recognize that for most families throughout the state, it's actually not optional. Most families enroll in kindergarten, but it, according to the state, is not a mandatory grade of enrollment. Am I saying that correctly, Katie? Or can you clarify that further?
Yes, not a mandatory grade within a public school. So that's why you will see, you know, preschool programs or businesses that offer a kindergarten program. So it's not a mandatory, exactly what you said.
Lisa?
Does anybody else need a two minute break?
I mean, you can do a two minute break, like a restroom break, aren't you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, it's all right.
I think we're ready.
Okay, we're resuming the discussion of options and preferences.
So I appreciate Lisa's historical perspective. I think that's really important. And I just think it's important to remember, I know there's a lot of comparison to other districts and their fees versus ours, just a reminder of how much construction was necessary to be able to house these programs and just appreciation, my appreciation for previous boards' planning so that, as Ann said, we're able to have these options. And I guess personally, I am drawn toward the idea of number four. I like the philosophical shift toward thinking about covering the operational costs. And I know we don't need to make a decision now, and I don't think we should. It's huge considerations to get us ready. So I don't know if it's one more year or two more years, but I agree with Ann that if we can get ahead of where it's required, that's where I'd like to see us. And to your point, Lisa, about our fund balance, I agree. As it gets closer to 40, in the coming years, it's concerning. And I do think it will be important to continue to have conversations about other fees of things that are optional that we have been subsidizing. Maybe we'll continue to keep it the same, but maybe not. You know, I think we have to look at this in conjunction with other decisions we make to make sure we're careful stewards of our balance moving forward.
Lisa?
I do want to say, the one thing I liked that Ann said was that if you do look at the percentage of children who are enrolling in keep, it is almost everyone. And that helps me in terms of the precedent that we've always had. Like, I can justify this as not a change in precedent when you frame it the way Ann framed it.
I was thinking the same thing, that the whole community benefits from kids having a robust kindergarten experience. Anyone else?
Can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
What do people think about the two year versus one year reduced fee?
You mean, having kindergarten start in 2025 versus 2026?
Offering full day kindergarten. So if I go, if I'm looking at option four, it would be 2025, the way it's written here, 2025 and 26, the same, is 4,392. And then starting all day K with no fee in 2026.
Wait, which option was that?
It's option 4A. When Lisa's proposing.
Oh.
I'm proposing something that's not on.
It's not on here.
Like a hybrid.
But option three is starting in 2020.
Lisa, just so I understand what you're talking about. So today, though, I thought we were we were talking about the fees, and then we're delaying to talk about when, you know, when.
That is an option. The board could decide today. Well, you're actually directing us on and what you want to vote on next Monday. But but you're deciding today what's going to be the action item for the upcoming board meeting. So that could be just establishing the fee, and you're going to delay the implementation date of full day kindergarten until a later meeting. What needs to be determined today for sure is what the fee is that you're going to vote on on Monday at the board meeting. But the board, if you're ready to say, we're, we want to move to full day kindergarten in the year 25, 26, you could certainly direct us accordingly. But we need to know that at the latest by April.
So John, I wonder if it makes sense for us to make a decision about guidance on the fee?
Yeah, right.
And then continue the conversation about timing.
Yeah, that's where I was going to go. Get more feedback.
Doesn't it impact, though, the percent of the fund balance, though, depending on what year you start? So I don't know, this seems kind of tied into me.
I also just wonder what more information we would want. Right? Like, what's going to change if we punt to April? I'm in favor of doing a package deal, just in terms of understanding kind of our runway and the financial ramifications of what happens this year as well as out years.
I am also in favor of, if we can decide today, doing that. If we had consensus about just the fees, but not the rest, I could see putting it off. But I agree with Allison that they're they're tied up, or they're tied together.
And I think they should be.
Yeah. But we we do need to figure out the fees at a minimum. So do we have board opinions about that?
So far, I've only heard people talking about three or four.
Which are the same fee.
Which are the same fee. So I don't know if there are people who are really more advocating for one or two.
I mean, we could break it up. So are we good with the reduction of fees?
Yeah, option three and option four have the same fee charged for keep.
Yeah.
Just the operational cost. The board would be subsidizing the capital investment in both of those scenarios.
Right, that's different.
What?
I'm confused. I thought that...
The keep fee in option three and option four are the same.
It's just that one...
Or 24, 25.
It's not the same as it is today. It is a reduction.
Right, right, right. It is a reduction.
It's right. The board would start subsidizing the capital investment in both of those options.
Right.
Do we know how much of an impact there would be if we did option three or four, but didn't start it until 2026 versus 2025 or 2027? Right, because option three is 2027 and option four is 2025, right? Do we know 2026?
So we didn't run that calculation, but I see Cory just pulled out his calculator. So we'll see if he can do a very rough, don't hold him to it kind of estimate here in just a second. And while he's doing some math, I will follow up on the question about half day kindergarten, because I did pull up school code. School code right now, as it as it reads, says that until the year of 27, 28, the board may establish kindergarten with half day attendance or full day attendance. However, if the board establishes full day kindergarten, it shall also establish a half day kindergarten program. So between now and 27, 28, that option must be available. What I wanted to clarify is that beginning in the 27, 28 school year, each board must establish full day kindergarten. We know that. And May is inserted as part of the half day kindergarten program. So things are a little bit different, again, between now and 27, 28. As of 27, 28, then it becomes optional to offer the half day kindergarten program. So that's really helpful for us to just clarify that in in the upcoming years, even if you as a board move to full day kindergarten, we still must make available a half a half day option. Again, what that looks like, every district is answering that question a little bit differently, but it is good to clarify that as of 27, 28, it becomes optional to make available a half day program. Thank you. That's helpful. Okay. Thank you.
Guys, thanks.
Cory was going to try and answer, sorry, John. Cory was going to try and answer someone's question about the now proposed option five, which is kind of breaking that in half and in running a fee based enrichment program for two years, and then transitioning to full day kindergarten one year earlier than the state is requiring of us.
Okay, so that that's bringing, so that's 25, oh, sorry, 26, 27 would be one year?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so the 4,392 per student fee, at 276 students, is roughly $1.2 million in fees. So the difference between option three and four originally was two years' worth of that fee. You're essentially, if you look at the very bottom right of option three, 43.7%, and then go into the bottom right, 40.8%, you you end up halfway in between. So that's 42.3%. That's the difference by extending that fee for two years instead of one.
And again, that's a very rough estimate, knowing that there'll be lots of decisions to be made between now and then.
So I just want to say, that makes me feel a little more comfortable because it's a teeny bit above the line, and it gives the district even another year to plan for all day K. But I don't want to die on the sword. I'm just saying, it just, it makes me feel comfortable because I don't want to, you know, 10 years from now, have the board going, oh, that decision was the one that pushed us to the edge, right? It started that slippery slope. I think we've we've had a history of being fiscally conservative in our moves. This feels more in line with that.
John was waving his hand frantically.
Okay, okay, hear me out here. So do we have a consensus that we should lower the fee by this $2,000? Because it sounds to me like we do.
We totally do.
Okay, and then, okay, well, that was that was pretty easy. And so number two, which I think is harder, is the, okay, when would we want the district to implement full day? And I've heard 26, 27, 25, 26, 24, 25.
No, 24, 25 is not an option.
Oh, off the table. Okay, so I guess, is, okay, okay.
It'll take them a year and a half to get ready.
Okay, okay, okay. So that was the part of the line. So then we have, we basically have three choices for when, you know, legislatively mandated when, 27, 28, and then the other two years. Man, I vote we defer that decision personally. I'd like to think about it some more.
What, John, what more would you want to think about? Like, what are the factors? Do you need more information or just more time to percolate?
You know, I'm I'm slow, Lisa. I want to think about this more.
Well, here's an option. I mean, they need the decision by April. We don't have to wait till April.
Yeah, we don't have to wait till, like...
Do it in January.
Yeah.
A bit.
Fine with that.
More time, and then Bonnie would be here.
And and maybe it could be helpful, Cory. Do you have a sense of, I know there's some decisions that will be coming up and some reports that will be happening at the December board meeting, the January board meeting, the February board meeting, as you kind of think about what other information would help the board to make a well informed decision about this transition? Can you can you share some of those reports that might help them, if you're someone like John, who wants to percolate a little bit more?
Yeah, well, definitely, I guess, possibly January, but more likely February would be a big month of of having some conversations about capital and some of the other the other operational items. You know, in my head, I had been thinking February or March for those, but certainly by February, I don't want to promise January, because not everything is entirely up to me. There is some reliance on other other parties for assistance, so. But I think we could certainly, if that was the direction they wanted to go, January, February, start to have their, you know, conversations and have some rough ideas of what what amounts might look like.
How does that feel to the administration? Like, us deciding that piece now versus then?
I mean, the sooner the better, first of all. But second of all, we are very comfortable with the decision, as long as it's made by April, that we will have ample time to plan for the transition. There are other projects that we're working on between now and April anyways. So would we be able to get a jump start? For sure. But would it be a significant jump start? Probably not, because we've already mapped out what our January, February, March activities and committee work will be looking like. So that jump start is not super significant, right? It's not like we're going to call teachers together in January and get them working on this, because they've already kind of, they're already set on what they're going to be working on. They would like to know, like, as would the community. Let's be clear, and I'm sure our parents would love to know as well. Katie, did you have something else to add there?
Exactly. I was just nodding in agreement. You know, we would want representatives from the kindergarten teams. And currently with, I don't know if you noticed the committees that we have at the district level, we're pretty sparse right now with availability. So even if, we wouldn't be able to get a jump start right away. But again, I was just nodding ferociously that everybody would love to know anytime at any point in advance or by April.
And I I think you answered this this question. I mean, I just look at our strategic plan and everything that everyone has on their plate right now and all of the committee work that's being done. And so adding this, you know, you do feel, though, that it is ample time, a year and a half, and that it's not, you know, going to put unnecessary, that would put unnecessary pressure, additional pressure on the administration, a year and a half versus two and a half years.
That's a good question. So every time we add something to the plate of our administrators and our teachers, it's added pressure. So I appreciate your asking the question, because that is the reality of the work we're doing, and we're already asking so much as part of our strategic plan. That said, having mapped out kind of the action steps that need to be taken, this will take priority. If we get direction by April, this will this will take priority, and it may mean that some other things move just a little more slowly as they're evolved, so making this a priority. But I think we're comfortable with the the April deadline, knowing for sure. So.
So it sounds like we all agree, lower the fees. Next year's fees will be $4,392, right?
If everyone is in agreement with that direction, I'm seeing heads nod around the table and also online. We will make that recommendation at the board's meeting on next Monday, and the board will have the opportunity to vote in favor of that or to vote it down if you wish. And then we'll begin planning accordingly, and we'll we'll communicate that as soon as possible. So that will be the, we will recommend the fee for the keep 39 program for the 24, 25 school year to be $4,392.
Right. And then how, oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make sure people have the information they feel like they might need to make the other decision. So when, so, just so administration can prepare, to John's point, wanting more information, kind of, are there more things that people want?
Well, I'm wondering if what Cory said about some presentations happening in February, did that sound, is February a time to revisit the timing?
But I'm asking, also asking the what.
Is there more that people want?
Do people want? Well, maybe this sheet for 26, 27, the one that results in the guess of 42.3% in this year 25.
And that may include decisions that we make in winter months.
Right.
That might help us see that better.
Well, and the other thing that we'll be folding in to the projections are the decisions that you'll make on Monday related to the summer construction work. So some of that... So some of that will be helpful. But really, as we get toward February, we start looking forward to some of the planning for the upcoming school year and beyond. So what happens administratively in December and in January is we start to do some needs assessments. We start to look preliminarily at what staffing might look like for next year, what our projected enrollment will be and, and what, what we need to plan for in those regards. So by February, March, we're starting to really see the budget skeleton of it come together. So I think that's what Cory is, is referencing. But between now and January, if there are other things that you think, you know, this would be really helpful if I could see these data, let us know. And if not, before the January committee of the whole meeting, at that time, or we'll prompt you again so that we can make sure that we're kind of ramping up toward a decision being made. If it's in February, that'd be great. If it's in March, fantastic. If it's any later than April, that's not fantastic. So maybe we make an agreement that if we can't decide by April, it's decided for us that it's, that the change is put off at least a year. It would have to be, yes. Right, like, like one more year. Like, it could not be the fastest. Wait, that's right. We need a decision by April in order to implement full-day kindergarten by 25, 26 school year.
Anybody else? Great. This would be the opportunity for the public to address the board. Seeing no one here, we will move on to old business. Is there any old business? New business? I have a couple things, one of which is on our agenda. So I received an email from a constituent informing me about a sustainability committee upon which, in the community, upon which a representative from the Nutria School Board sits. If somebody on our board is interested in joining that committee, please reach out to me and we will make that happen.
Let me try to clarify. No, let me, sorry, let me clarify there. The Nutria High School has a sustainability committee. We, in, in District 39, have a sustainability committee. I think the community member was pointing out that for Nutria High School, there's a board member liaison who serves on that committee. For our committee, we don't currently have a board liaison. There hasn't been a request made of the board, at least not in recent years. But we do have a sustainability committee. It meets with some regularity and reviews a variety of topics. And so this community member was simply highlighting that difference for the board and, and wanting to ask the board to consider sending a liaison to our, our District 39 committee. So some additional information has been shared and...
Thanks for that because I was clearly confused. So if you want to sit on the D-39 Sustainability Committee, reach out to me. I believe that's that. The other issue is that the Ed Foundation was supposed to meet Wednesday. We did not have a board member signed up for that. That meeting has been moved to tomorrow night at 7:00 PM on Zoom. So if you are able to go to that, reach out and we can get you the Zoom link, Zoom link for that. Is there any other new business? Then, having no further business, we need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
Motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting?
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, will the clerk please call the roll?
John, is he ready?
Yes.
Ann Hart?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Paling?
Yes.
Lucy Schneider-Pabes?
Yes.
Erin Stone?
Yes. Motion carries and the meeting is adjourned and the time is 10:02 AM.